It's 5:00 PM, so I'm going to call the orders of meeting of the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, May 7th, 2025. We have five petitions on the agenda, so we're going to be hopefully as efficient as we can be. A couple of housekeeping items. When we have a petition read, we ask that somebody representing the petitioner comes to the microphone right in front of me. Please identify your name and your home address prior to speaking. And at a time for each of the petitions, there will be an opportunity for the public to speak either in favor or in opposition to any specific petition. You must go to the microphone over here to my left or to your right. State your name, home address, limit your remarks to five minutes, and it must be about the petition and how that impacts you or your business or the space around the petitioner. So I'm going to ask that we have the clerk read the first petition, and then again, someone from the petition request come to the front to the microphone.
The petition of Deborah and Gerald Spoto of 310 Margaret Street, Jamestown, for a use variance to operate an embroidery shop on parcel 371.09-4-6 located at 310 Margaret Street and owned by Deborah and Gerald Spoto in an R1 zone. Section 300-0305, R1, single-family residential district. Operation of the business is not a permitted use. The first permitted personal service establishment business use is in the C1 neighborhood commercial district.
Can you think sick as well? Name, home address, and then if each of you is going to speak, then you have to identify yourself again each time you speak, just so that we have that on the record as we're transcribing later. Okay, go ahead.
Deborah Spoto.
And your home address?
310 Margaret Street, Jamestown.
And do you want to tell us a little bit about the reason for the request? You said you're going to build an addition. We don't have specifics on the addition, but we need to know a little bit more about why you need the use variance request.
I need the room, I need the space.
And that is going to be onto the garage, is that correct? How much additional square footage are you looking at?
Dylan Monroe, Monroe LLC, owner. Our business address is 15 Cross Street, Falkner, New York. My personal address, 165 Benedict Avenue, Jamestown. The space is 24 feet wide by 12 feet long. It will be added to the front of the garage, the current front of the garage, extended out about 12 feet. The 24 feet is the existing width of the previous garage.
Thank you. And can you tell us a little bit about the history of the embroidery shop there? We don't have that history, but I understand that maybe there was a variance requested and given years ago, so...
A long time ago, 1999.
And that was a use variance, Ms. Spoto?
I believe so.
To have the embroidery shop in the garage, okay. So you're asking actually for an extension of the use variance in order to be able to continue to operate, is that correct? And the business as an embroidery shop, I guess we need to know if there are questions on the existing business and how that expansion would impact the neighborhood.
Just first, there's no, this is a use variance, right? So there's no issues regarding any area variance in relation to the addition, right?
Right, just the use variance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And there you have, like, there's been a use variance.
That's what you said from 1999. Questions on the request from the board members? Is this a business that you have customers coming to your site, or is it mostly that you're sending out the work?
Some do come, but we mostly deliver. When we finish the orders, we mostly deliver them.
So can you tell us how much in terms of traffic there would be at your business site and what the hours would be when somebody might actually come there?
Probably from noon to maybe 6:00, and we don't get a lot of traffic.
And that's Monday through Friday, or weekends?
Yeah.
There's a current addition now, is that correct? Now, is that staying and you're heading into Charlotte?
Yeah.
What's the size of the current, uh, where is that?
24 by 36.
24.
Yeah, too, it's like that. So that's the width of the double garage now, right? So this addition, is it coming down the driveway towards Charlotte?
Yes.
What, uh...
Going out toward Charlotte.
Dylan Monroe, Monroe LLC. The current garage is roughly 15 to 60 feet off of Charlotte. We're coming out 12 feet, so the garage is still, the front-facing part of the garage is still almost 40 feet into the parcel.
What's the material? Is this a permanent structure, foundation, or is this...
Correct, sir. We are using a footer with a set wall, and we're going to use a monolithic board to, it's going to be a permanent combination to the building. We are excavating the current driveway, the 12 feet that we're building out, to create a level surface.
Other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Will this extension have electricity or plumbing for water?
No plumbing, there will be electricity, but it will be on the, it'll only be extended on the right, really only the right wall, because the front wall is just the entryway to the site. She's looking for more storage in that area than electricity.
Okay, now, that was going to be my next question as I seize the floor for Ms. Spoto. If this was intended as storage or if you were going to be working in this space?
It'll mostly be storage, and then I'll have more room to work than others.
Okay, in your existing space. Thank you.
Other questions?
You said that you had a variance in 1999. Have there been any issues or any neighborhood issues?
No.
And it concerns you?
No, I didn't have people write me their letters, they wrote me up. It was fine, some were past issues. No.
One of the things we have to look at is the financial impact, you know, is this the best result that you could find for your business versus going somewhere else where you could find commercial space? So have you looked at other spaces that could maybe accommodate your increased need for storage in your business versus having it at your home?
We've looked a little bit, but financially, it's not, it's better than any other time.
So you did estimate how much it would be for commercial space?
Yeah, we've seen a few differences.
We didn't see that documentation, we saw the documentation that you have, that your revenue is $9,000 versus expenses of $7,600 a month, but we don't know how that compares to having a commercial rental space. So was it, you know, $10 a square foot, $20 a square foot that you looked at to see how much it would be?
Way of eventual luck, we just, like, see places.
Mr. Dylan Monroe, the real issue for Ms. Spoto and Mr. Spoto, if I can speak freely, there's, as they, as they're advancing in life, there's health issues for them as well to be able to travel to different areas to, you know, access their business in the ways that, you know, they need to. So this space also allows them to operate their business based on, you know, their advancement through life and stay at home. So I know that they have looked, but the real issue that they're having is getting up and traveling to these sites every single day.
Other questions? One of the concerns of a use variance is, of course, that use variance would continue with the next property owner. So we want to limit the opportunity for somebody to come in and provide a business that's not quiet, like an embroidery shop, in a residential neighborhood. So you understand why we're questioning that, because somebody could come in and have, you know, a business that has a lot of customers and a lot of traffic, and it doesn't fit well into the neighborhood. So that's why a use variance is very different than just asking for an area variance. At this point, if the board doesn't have any other questions, we open it up to the public. We have an opportunity, again, for people to speak up to five minutes, either in favor or in opposition to this use variance request at 310 Margaret Street. Please go to the microphone if you have a concern that you want to air. One more time, one more opportunity, anyone who wants to speak on the use variance request at 310 Margaret. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We do have an opportunity to have read into the record any requests that have come to the clerk's office in writing, so I'll ask if there are any.
I do have one. Dear Southern Board of Appeals, I write this letter in my personal capacity as a resident of the city of Jamestown. I am in favor of the application for the petition of Deborah and Gerald Spoto of 310 Margaret Street, Jamestown, for a use variance to operate an embroidery shop on parcel 371.09-4-6 located at 310 Margaret Street and owned by Deborah and Gerald Spoto in an R1 zone. From 1994 to 2007, I was a resident of this neighborhood as a minor living with my parents. I still frequently visit this neighborhood for recreational purposes. Throughout my childhood, the embroidery shop was run by the Spotos and has proved to be a very important asset to the community. The increased presence of people in the neighborhood is beneficial to its safety as well. Any foot traffic the Spotos have is minor at best, as the majority of their work is specialty order. Further, the business does not generate any harmful odors or noise. That's Elliot Estrom.
Thank you. Any questions or follow-up? Seeing none, I would be looking for a motion on the use variance request for 310 Margaret Street with the understanding that there is a current use variance in effect on their property for this embroidery shop.
Yeah, I'm going to move to approve it, and just for whatever it's worth, in my opinion, it's pretty easy because there's already use variance. So they're able to use the embroidery shop, and someone else, if they moved into that building or that home, could operate a business, and there's nothing anybody can do about it, and they're just asking for, to be able to add on to the existing home in a way which doesn't require a variance. So the addition is well within the current structure of the rules and regulations. Given that, I think that, you know, this should be approved based on the fact that the use variance has already been put in place, and that this, they're simply extending the home in a manner which comports with the current zoning regulations, so...
Thank you, Mr. Kenyon. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the use variance be extended for the embroidery shop to be improved and added to at 310 Margaret Street. Is that clear? Okay, then we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Mr. Pennebyko?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Tatan.
Yes. The use variance has been extended. If you need to, please make sure you talk with Larry Scalise as there may be additional paperwork to do before you go ahead and do the work. Okay? Thank you very much. We're running to the next petition. If the clerk would like to make that.
The petition of Nathan Mason for an area variance for a four-foot fence in the front yard on parcel 370.12-3-4 located on 525 Falkner Street and owned by Jamestown Community College in R1 zone. Section 300-0206, fences and residential districts. Hello, fence site in the front yard is three and a half feet and proposed to be.
Thank you. If you would please identify yourselves again, home, name and home address, and tell us a little bit about the request and why it's needed.
Sure. My name is Heather Greenfield, I'm at 318 Benedict Avenue, Jamestown.
Can you pass the microphone closer to me? Thank you. I just want to get your voice.
Heather Greenfield, 318 Benedict Avenue, Jamestown.
I'm Emily Reynolds. I live at 2644 Wicks Corners in Sherman Road, but I'm here on behalf of the Cornell Cooperative Extension with our offices at the Jamestown Community College campus by 105 Falkner Street.
Either one of you, if you want to talk about the need for the fencing and the need for it to be in what they call the front property.
Sure. So the need for the fence, we are in the process, I'm a Cornell Cooperative Extension master gardener volunteer, and we lost our garden space at the airport about five years ago. We relocated to JCC. Since then, we've had no garden space for what they call a demonstration garden, so that provides education and resources for community members of all ages and abilities. And so we just want to rebuild, uh, to build, sorry, a new 64 by 32-foot garden space, and we'll actually do that twice, because the community garden will move over there under Cornell Cooperative Extension as well. And that would provide areas for community members to garden in city of Jamestown. And so we need the variance because currently there's no fence there. It's an old parking lot that was removed, and it is now just green space outside of the science center on James Street, and they no longer made a three, three and a half foot tall fence. So we are asking for the variance because there's a six-inch difference between three and a half feet and what you can find out, which is four feet tall. So that is our request. To cut the fence down to three and a half feet is a substantial economic hardship for a group of volunteers who donate over 3,000 hours in Chicago County on an annual basis, so, so that's our request.
Are there questions from members of the board? I think when I went to the site, it did look like it was directly on the property line because there's a parking lot, right?
Correct.
All of that, and this fencing will be permanent?
It will be permanent.
Okay. And is it going to be owned by the Cornell Cooperative Extension versus the college?
It is, it's a partnership agreement, and we do have a support letter from the college. We have them apply for the variance because it is their property. It'll be a partnership on the purchase of the fence, but it's not the intention of it going anywhere if the cooperative extension had to leave.
And the timeframe for this is soon, I take it? You're going to be putting this fencing in very shortly?
Yes, we are, we are seeking funds to be able to purchase and install the fence, and just within the last week have a potential donation of fence. So we're ready, if we can make it all come together. I have crystal ball, it's not exactly what, but hopefully soon.
Follow-up questions? Seeing none, it's time for the public. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak to the variance request for an area variance at Jamestown Community College for the Cornell Cooperative Extension to have a community garden with four-foot fencing around it. Again, anyone in the public who would like to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment if there are any who would like to start.
I do, I have one email. As the property owner of 140 James, Anthony Jameson, I have no concerns regarding the variance requested by Nathan Mason to install a four-foot fence in the front yard on parcel 370.12-3-4 or 525 Falkner Street. This is coming to public hearing tomorrow, May 7th. I appreciate the consideration. Great scout.
And you said you'd have a letter from JCC, is that something we could read into the record?
Certainly.
To whom I may concern, on behalf of Jamestown Community College, we support Cornell Cooperative
Extension of Chicago County's Community Demonstration Garden Project. We support the request for a variance permit that will be discussed on Wednesday, May 7th, 2025. The demonstration garden offers a unique opportunity to offer research-based gardening education to Chicago County residents and community members. This effort is led by Cornell Cooperative Extension of Chicago County and will be located on Jamestown Community College's campus and is in partnership with JCC. The new community demonstration garden will be in the green space outside of the existing science center at JCC. This location is ideal, offering sunlight, water access, and increased visibility in connection with CCE's office in the Carnegie Center. The adjacent parking lot and sidewalks will also increase accessibility for community members and volunteers with mobility challenges and college engagement. We fully support this request. Sincerely, Daniel Di Marte, President.
Any follow-up questions from members of the board? Seeing none, I would be looking for a motion on the area variance request in Jamestown Community College and Cornell Cooperative Extension for a four-foot fencing.
Make a motion for the four-foot fence.
Is there a second for that motion?
I would second that.
Thank you. So the motion is to approve an area variance for the college and the Cornell Cooperative Extension to put the four-foot fence in around the community gardens. Questions on that? Seeing none, we'll call the roll. Sorry.
Just for the record, I would say that the petition as submitted does match the criteria of the statute very closely, so I believe that what they've said today and what they've submitted on paper makes the case according to the statute, so we should proceed with the motion.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. At this point, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll again.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Mr. Pennebyko?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Tatan.
Yes. And approved.
Thank you.
Make sure you see Mr. Scalise in the development office for any follow-up, okay?
Thank you.
I'm ready for the next. Go ahead and read the next request.
Okay. The petition of Ricky A. Faulkner, 1999 Benedict Avenue, Jamestown, for a use variance for commercial storage for food truck products on parcel 371.17-1-37.1 located at 199 Benedict Avenue and owned by Ricky Faulkner. Section 300-0305, section, sorry, R1, single-family residential district. Operation of the business is not a permitted use. The first permitted business use for a restaurant is in the C2 community commercial district.
Okay, is Mr. Faulkner here? If you would like to come to the microphone, state your name, home address, and answer questions, and tell us a little bit more about the need for this particular request.
Okay. Ricky A. Faulkner, 1999 Benedict Avenue, Jamestown. I've been currently running the food truck business out of my home, and for the last two years, like, everybody in the city was aware of what I was doing with it. The Health Department this year won't renew my permit because of the residential issue. I was before this board two years ago to get a variance to be able to park the truck there, but now this year they're telling me, okay, I have the business in my garage, but this is the only way it is. So it's strictly just storage, dry storage, and there's no cooking, none of that going on in there. It's shelving and refrigeration for product.
And you mentioned in this document that the Health Department had changed the regulations, but can you explain a little bit more about the regulations that you have to follow for that storage?
When I originally bought the truck, I started working with the Health Department before I bought the truck. You can do without a commissary, which is basically what they're considered the garage when it's approved. So they, I bought the truck, it's self-sufficient, it does everything it needs to do on the truck, and they make acceptances, or, you know, for that. And they have, you know, for two years, I guess, the Health Department now has a new head boss there, and he's saying that never should have been allowed, it's not in the rules, they don't allow it, although they allowed it for multiple, I'm not the only one in this position. So he's saying, we're not changing any of the enforcing rules we had. I got led to believe I wouldn't need that before I even bought the truck, I worked with them, and so, they, you know, inspected me several times and never had an issue with anything.
All right, so, members of the board, are there questions on this variance request?
Mr. Faulkner, just to be clear, you said this is just dry storage?
Correct.
You don't have kitchen plumbing, et cetera?
I, I was using the outside hose bit to fill the water on my truck, they wouldn't allow that, so that had to be moved into the garage, and when that had moved into the garage, I had to add plumbing for the sink in there, which was all permitted through BPU and approved and inspected, so, yes, there is now a sink with a hose bit in there.
Thank you.
Other questions? When you came to this board a couple of years ago to park your truck, that was so that it would just be there when it wasn't being used elsewhere?
Correct.
You were not going to have any business located at that address?
Correct.
And now, the commissary, or what's called the commissary, does that not make it commercial property if you have a commissary located in the garage?
I, that would be more a question for you, I guess.
I just, I didn't know what the Health Department called it, they called it a commercial location.
That's what they're allocated, that you have a commissary that has to be a commercial, yes. I mean, nothing's going to change, I'm still not going to have customers or anybody come into the house.
What type of things do you store there?
Um, like cans of, the number 10 can, tomato sauce, flour, tortilla shells and burrito shells, lots of to-go containers, bags, and that's the majority of my stuff, that's everything you could use the food in. Everything that's refrigerated goes on the truck, that's why the refrigeration is and everything, so, um, there's some spices and just, yeah.
You have a large property, I think, up there, too?
Yeah, I don't know, four acres, four acres. The garage is a full three-car bay garage, and I just took half of one of those bays and walled it to the ceiling and drywalled it, hardboard walls and painted everything white, and it looks nice, clean, has its own separate entrance, so, you know, if you rest in the garage or anything, but it's nothing visible from outside.
Other questions? Just to be clear, Mr. Faulkner, you said there's no refrigeration in what is called the commissary garage?
There is, there's one refrigerator in there, yeah.
So you would have perishables in the garage?
When I get a delivery, I usually put everything that's cold in there, and then I go on the truck, rearrange the truck, make a report, and then I go right into the truck, everything's prepped and used on the truck.
So the truck is...
If anything ever gets opened, it doesn't go back to the refrigerator, stays on the truck.
So the truck is plugged in?
Yes, yeah.
Into the garage?
Yes.
Into the area that you now have as a commissary, is that right?
Correct, yeah, and that was permitted and inspected two years ago when we put through all this, yeah.
Okay. Question for you, Larry. Have you looked into this? Is this now in compliance with the Health Department, what they're requiring?
We've had a discussion with them, and yes, it would appear that they would accept if they were given the variance, that that ring commissary out of the garage.
So you've checked everything out?
We did, yeah, we did have a conversation with them. The rules have always been there, they were very lax in enforcing them previously. Now that there's new management in the department, everybody's, you're the only ones having the same names, uh, so...
So does that property get to become commercial then? Okay.
Used... Used, uh, operated from commissary could be one of the, or that's actually what he's asking for, would be the variance. Somebody wanted to come in and try running a machine shop out of their name, so it would be no.
So just for clarification, there's a limitation of this use variance, that it would be for the commissary use only for this? Okay. Um, any other further questions from the board at this point? Um, we would now open the public comment section. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to the request for a use variance at one ninety-nine Benedict Avenue, um, now is the time. Go to the microphone, state your name and home address. One more time. Anyone in the, on the public who would like to speak on this use variance request? Now is the time. Otherwise, we're going to close the public comment. Okay, we will close public comment. Uh, now is the time when we will ask the clerk if there's any correspondence.
I do not receive any.
Okay. Seeing none, are there follow-up questions? At this point then, we would be looking for a motion on the use variance request at one ninety-nine Benedict for, uh, the food truck commissary that's located there.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Panavico, you're making a motion to approve the use variance request, just so that I know you got it fully stated.
Yep, yep.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones? And at this point, we will ask for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Penyon?
Yes.
Mr. Panavico?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairwoman DeToppo?
Yes.
So you need to work with Mr. Scalise again to make sure all the paperwork's in order and it then goes to the Health Department.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, we're ready for the next petition request. If you would read that.
The petition of the Salvation Army, four forty West Nyack Road, West Nyack, New York, one zero nine nine four dash one seven three nine, for an area variance to construct a six-foot fence on parcel three seven point three three dash two dash thirty-six, owned by the Salvation Army in the NRC Zone. Section three hundred dash zero two zero six, fences in residential districts. The maximum height of the fence in a front yard is three and a half. Proposed is sixty.
If you would please state your name and address before you speak.
Hi, I'm Carrie Bellarick with Bemis Bay Architecture. Address is four nine five seven Main Street in Bemis Point, New York. And, uh, I'm here representing the Salvation Army. With me also is Major John Merchant from the Salvation Army. And we were approved for, uh, variance for the fence height a couple of years ago. There were some delays to the project, so it timed out. So we are back in, asking to get a variance over again. Um, we would like to install two fences, one around the courtyard of the property that would be in the front yard. And the second fence would be in the rear of the property, and that's a secure fence around the parking area. Um, due to the sensitive nature of some of the clients in the building, they would like some privacy. Um, so the fence height being raised up to six feet is due to that fact. Okay. Uh, the fence in the courtyard is proposed to be a vinyl privacy fence. Uh, I do have some pictures I could show you. Did I include that or?
We've had lots of documentation here, yes.
We do, for the fence. Um, so that would be a privacy fence, uh, around the courtyard. In the rear of the building, it's a black chain link fence, but it doesn't look like a standard chain link fence because it has the privacy slats. So it has a very nice look, and that would be the secure fence in the back parking area. And I do have larger drawings if you need to see them spring as far as the location.
If you could just remind us, the, uh, previous variance request that was approved was for six-foot fencing as well, is that correct?
Correct, it was for the identical submittal, yes.
Are there questions from members of the board? This project you expect to go forward this year, is that correct?
It is underway as we speak, yes. The fence wouldn't be installed for several months, but the groundwork is underway.
Any questions from members of the board? Seeing none, at this point, I would ask, um, to open the public session. If anyone from the public would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to the request for six-foot fencing at the pro, at the future site, I should say, from the Salvation Army, uh, facility. Anyone in the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Are there correspondence to the others on this? Okay, no correspondence. At this point, we would be looking then for a motion on the, uh, variance request for an area variance to have a six-foot fence both in the front and the rear of the property, uh, for the Salvation Army project.
Oh, for the required, uh, the fence in the backyard does not require variance at all.
No, ne- neither fence requires a variance. We made all the setback requirements, so, other than...
It's just the height.
It's just requesting to go to a higher fence height.
It's the height that you're asking for.
Yes, right.
Um, okay.
I'd like a motion to approve the variance for six-foot height.
Thank you, Mr. Penyon. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so we have six-foot fencing, uh, and the request is, uh, for the motion to be approved for the six-foot fencing in both parts of that project. At this point, are there any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Penyon?
Yes.
Mr. Panavico?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairwoman DeToppo?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you all very much.
The petition of St. Susan's Center, speak, thirty-one Water Street, Jamestown, New York, for an area variance for a five-foot setback on the rear property line on parcel three seven point three nine dash two dash three three, located at eleventh Paramount Avenue, Jamestown, New York, and owned by D and J Conklin Family Trust in a C two zone. Section three hundred dash zero three zero nine, C, C two Community Commercial District. Required rear yard setback is ten feet. Proposed is five.
So is someone representing, and if you would come to the microphone, state your name and address before you speak about the project.
Sure, my name is Chris Cook with Chris Cook Architecture. Address is twenty-five South Main Street, Cassadegh, New York. Uh, I'm here with St. Susan's Center, uh, also behind me is Greg Lindquist, board member, and Sherry Roland, executive director. Uh, as you know, St. Susan's Center is relocating their, um, facility to the former Jamestown Business College site. Um, I think you have a copy of this in the paperwork as well. Uh, I'll walk you through it if it's hard to see on a small-scale paper. This is the old Jamestown Business College. There's the mansion associated with it. This connector is being removed between those two buildings. They're being separated uses. Uh, the coolers to service the kitchen, basically, uh, we're trying to hide them as best we can behind the building. And so, uh, opposing locating coolers, uh, back, uh, between these two buildings. Uh, there's a connector there now that's not being used. It's walled off inside, actually. Uh, we're working through being that removed and the fear, the fear between the two property owners to remove that. Um, cooler here on the left side, there's currently a shed and its location, upper right-hand side is a picture of that. I'm not sure if that's approved or not, or just showed up at some point, but that'll be removed. And then on the other side here, you can see that that's kind of tucked in a little corner. That's the other cooler that will be located. Uh, both coolers, um, are twelve feet deep. One is twenty-two feet long, the other one's twenty-five feet long. This increases the amount of kitchen area available to operate the facility.
So those coolers, you're saying you're trying to hide them from what you'll call the main service area? Is there any other space within that you could use so that you don't need that setback variance?
So the area to the south here, uh, the property line, it would be even closer to those coolers if we located them there. Along the front of the property is high visibility. That is not ideal. Uh, both are building layout and for streetscape. Uh, the side here, the proposed entrance for the service is to the rear of the building again to keep it more concealed. There are windows along this entire side of the building. So back here is solid walls where these were butt rated to the building and have required any modifications for the facade. Um, if they were to be located, coolers on this side, there are deep window wells the architect previously used to let light through the basement. Those would be in-filled and modified quite extensively to make that work. Uh, it's obviously more expensive to do that as well. Uh, so the reason, um, to put them back here is to make financial sense and also, uh, alleviate some of the, uh, capital congestion near delivery side of the building.
And the the kitchen would be directly connected to those?
Correct, yeah. I'm sure they're, uh, here. So the front of the building is really all for the cafeteria space. So I know this is, I know this is far away, but, so the dining room is towards the front and all the kitchen use is in the back. So the coolers are back, back there.
Okay.
And the delivery access is right here.
All right, questions from the board?
Mr. Cook, where it says, um, remove connector next to the two new coolers, the building that that connector currently is attached to identified as a multi-story brick building, um, I do not have a good sense of direction. So what is that building currently as, used as? I get picture.
Sure, so it's right across the street, um, from the pizza shop there. It's it's a mixed-use building, so there's a lower level, upper level. Business College was using it when they were at their peak. There was classrooms in there. Before I was involved, they had already partitioned inside of that connector. So there's no physical entrance to get from this building to this building. Uh, the connector ramps up to meet the other building's first floor. So, you know, if it were level, it'd be great to use that for storage, right? But it's really not usable for anything other than a walkway.
My concern with just the initial question is that chillers and compressors and everything, is there going to be a noise element affecting the nearby building?
Uh, the compressors do have some noise associated with them, but, uh, they are not, they are not loud, uh, by any means. You can give an exhaust hood off a commercial kitchen runs. There's some noise associated with that. These are by far much, much quieter than that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Seeing none, uh, at this point, we will open this for public comment. Uh, again, there's a request for an area variance, uh, on the setback on on the property that's going to be used for the St. Susan's Center. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to speak either in favor or in opposition to that? One more opportunity. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We will now see if there's any correspondence on this particular variance request.
We did receive, um, one email in the office today. Bear with me, it's quite lengthy. Dear members of the zoning board, I am writing in regard to the public hearing scheduled for May seventh, twenty twenty-five, concerning the request for a variance to reduce the required rear setback from ten feet to five feet on the property adjacent to ours, formerly occupied by the Jamestown Business College and now associated with St. Susan's Center. We are the owners of the neighboring property. While we have always worked constructively with the past occupants, also our tenant, we have significant concerns about this variance request, both in terms of substance and process, and we are writing to formally oppose the granting of the variance as currently proposed. One, historical context. Several years ago, the Jamestown Business College, formerly our tenant, constructed a shed directly adjacent to the property line. A breezeway had previously been constructed connecting their building to ours as a part of the negotiated rental arrangement, which includes their agree, their agreement to remove the breezeway at their expense following termination of their occupancy. We do not object to the placement of the shed at the time because they were tenants in our building and the placement was done with mutual understanding. Our acceptance of the shed was never meant to serve as a permanent waiver of setback rules for future non-tenant occupants. Now that the property is being used by St. Susan's Center, large exterior refrigeration units are planned for installation within what appears to be significantly less than five feet of our property line. Number two, request for additional detail. We respectfully submit that additional detail is needed regarding the dimensions of commercial refrigeration units that would be placed within what appears to be a few feet of our building, less than a foot from our shared property line and in front of our windows. Information should be provided about the dimensions, height, noise levels, vibrations, or emissions of these external refrigeration units, including justification for the significant, in parentheses, much less than five feet, variance required for the placement. We respectfully request that you consider the proposed placement of the refrigeration units as they relate to the property line directly behind the eleventh Paramount Avenue building and note that the setback in relation to this property line is significantly less than the five-foot variance that is being proposed. The distance is not included, is not indicated on the plan we were provided. It appears to be inches rather than feet from our property line. Material concerns. We have specific concerns about the proposed refrigerator units, including height invisibility so close to our property line and directly adjacent windows, persistent noise and mechanical disturbance, especially if compressors or fans are located near our building, potential environmental or operational hazards, the pres, the precedent it sets for future structures encroaching on established setbacks. Number four, change in relationship. The current occupants are not our tenants and we would not, and we would, and we have not agreed to any use of the shared boundary that would violate current zoning regulations. We no longer have a landlord-tenant relationship that would justify relaxed spatial use or shared infrastructure. Further, when the breezeway is removed, there will be space that will allow an alternative placement of any refrigeration units in a manner that would be further from our shared property line. In light of the above, we respectfully request that the board deny the variance as submitted or at the very least postpone any decision until more information is provided about the specific nature of the proposed refrigeration equipment and its impact, including information detailing the distance from our shared property line and consideration of alternative placement along the side of the St. Susan's Center where the refrigeration units would be between commonly owned properties and allow for a proper public comment period once all specifications and plans are available, including details regarding proximity to the shared property line between the St. Susan's Center and the Westgate Professional Building. We would welcome the opportunity to work constructively, constructively toward a solution, but it must be based on transparency, zoning compliance, and respect for our property rights. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Jeanne Alphol, President, Clayman Properties Incorporated, thirty-six thirty-one Fairway Drive, Canfield, Ohio, four four fours and road six.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions?
Yeah, so just to address a couple of questions brought up and the, the person who wrote that's not here today, right?
Right.
Okay. Uh, how far from the property, I might have missed it. How far from the property line are these gonna be?
Uh, five feet. She mentioned a foot. That that is not accurate.
All right, so there's gonna be five feet between the end of these refrigeration units in their property?
Correct.
Okay, how tall is the refrigerator?
Uh, they are no taller than the, than the current building back there, so about nine feet.
Uh, we talked about the noise, um, let's see. I don't know, I, uh, well, this wasn't out there, but...
About the covering, are you, are you, uh, trying to camouflage it so it looks nicer? Or is it just gonna look like, uh, refrigeration?
Uh, so due to budget constraints, the initial proposal is just to have the typical exterior be a cooler. Uh, if there is a request by the board to camouflage those in a manner that's either paint-related or landscape, um, I think we're open to talking about that.
What's that, what's that look like when you say a cooler? Is it, like, that picture, like, what I used to, we're getting down with the stainless steel cooler, uh, where they had the hamburgers. Is that what it's gonna look like or?
So these would be white instead of stainless steel. So it's just a white, uh, block, basically, yeah.
And as they recall, I think that building's white, the neighbors.
Yeah, so it's a brick, they have brick on that side and it's, yeah.
Similar.
So, yeah, it's, it's pretty, usually the, the block and the brick on that St. Susan's Center is pretty light, so.
Mr. Cook, are these installed on a concrete pad?
Yes.
Is there a way to put a fence around it or anything to camouflage or, you know, access or what?
Uh, the fence, you could install a fence. It wouldn't be tall enough to hide them without a variance for the height. So if we would need to do that, um, the, the, the backs out of these coolers... Um, the, the, the backside of these coolers is really a pretty good fence in itself because there's no doors, uh, from the exterior. Uh, sometimes you'll see fast food restaurants with doors to access your exterior and they go through. These are all internally accessed, so it's basically three, uh, white walls to the outside.
This is kind of separate, that, the, the complaint of that storage, is that staying or going, or?
That will be removed, yeah, that will be removed.
I didn't know if they knew that was...
And looking at your plans, actually, one cooler is within five feet, but it looks like the second one is not that close to the property line, is that right?
Correct, so the cooler to the north is, uh, five feet, the cooler to the south is quite a bit farther back from the property.
And both of them will be accessed from the inside of the building, not from the outside?
Correct.
Okay, are there other follow-up questions? Seeing none, we would be looking for a motion on the proposed area variance for a five-foot setback, uh, to accommodate the coolers that will be added as part of the St. Susan renovation.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I believe the presentation and the application do address all the criteria for an area variance, so I would move to approve the request for the five-foot setback.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion to approve the area variance request?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any clarifying questions on the motion? Any conditions that you would like to set?
Leading question, Madam Chairwoman, um, I, I would amend the motion, I, I will not amend the motion, but I would just, up high, uh, I would request that the developer work with Mr. Scalise on, um, camouflaging, for lack of a better word. Um, I would not like to make it a condition if somebody else wants to amend. We have a process, but, um, I, I would still move to approve, just with the, the knowledge that that is a concern we're having.
Okay, that's one, thank you, and for the clarification.
Yeah, and I'd say to me, like, when you look at all the factors, this is way different for the record because someone's complaining. This is much different than a use variance in which you have to meet all, all the requirements. This is like a, uh, that's not required with an area variance. And when you look at all the factors, this isn't, it's not, it's not a residential neighborhood, it's in a very, it's in a commercial area. I don't know if it's, I think it's owned that way, but, I mean, it's a very busy part of the city of Jamestown, right downtown. It's not going to impact the character of the neighborhood. Uh, I think the concerns that were brought up in that letter have been addressed. The main concerns were, how close is it going to be to our building? And it's going to be five feet. The concern was, how noisy is this, it burdens some. And it's not going to be noisier, burdensome. It's probably less noise than the traffic that's currently, uh, emanating from that area. And, and so, considering all the factors, I, I, it, there's going to be a white, you know, uh, uh, you know, uh, what was freezer?
Box.
Exactly, and to me, given that neighborhood, from, for what it's worth from my perspective and for the record, that doesn't necessarily need to be camouflaged because it doesn't impact the neighbor, the, the, the character of that neighborhood. Um, so that's my concern.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. And you did ask, is it a commercial zone, yes, and zone C2? Okay, we're ready then to vote. I mean, I asked that the clerk call the roll on it.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Pennebyankel?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairwoman DeTong?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That is the end of the agenda, so I'm going to close the meeting.